Good morning, everybody, and welcome to the February 11, 2020, meeting of the Humboldt County Board of Supervisors. I'd like to begin by inviting you to join me in saluting the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. Madam CIO, are there any modifications to the agenda?
There are no modifications to the agenda this morning.
Thank you. With that, that brings us to our next item, which is the consent calendar. And I would entertain a motion. Supervisor Bass?
Make a motion to approve the consent calendar.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any public comment on this item?
Ken Swawwacki, I think when something really good appears to be happening, it should be brought forward. Item number 10, Planning and Building Department. It looks like we're going to get some money, and it looks like it's $4.8 million. Of course, that's on consent, but I still think people should know if this money is used appropriately, this is for housing. And my understanding is that it may be able to be used in the manner for secondary units, which is infill on things. And of course, that's the biggest asset we now have with the state being willing to do that, allow it. We have to do it. And now funding it. So it's kind of a little bit of an unf-- it's a funded mandate, which we don't normally see coming from the state, kind of the opposite of normal. Strongly recommend that John Ford and his department be congratulated for moving forward and attempting to get this kind of thing. I also recommend that we make sure the best staff that we have implement this particular project. And a full research be done as far as any kind of latitude we have with this money. Sometimes there are sideboards, sometimes there's exceptions you can get to this because it's a perfect chance for us to do some kind of other housing. I don't know if we can use it for the tiny houses in conjunction with these. I don't know whether we can start manufacturing such as possibly up at the Hoopa facility up there to use these things for use for infill, but I strongly recommend that all these options be considered because this is one of our chances to go ahead and help with our affordable housing projects. So really good to see this come forward, really good to see the state finally, hopefully, send us a little money rather than just mandates.
Thank you. Welcome.
Good morning. Brian Gerving, Director of Public Works and Interim Director of Development Services for the City of Eureka. On item C1, just on behalf of the city, want to thank the county for its support for the Crowley Site LCP Amendment and Q Zone Overlay. The city looks forward to a speedy review by the commission so that the applicant can submit the forthcoming coastal development application. Thank you.
Thank you, Brian. Any further comment on the consent agenda? Seeing none, I'll bring it back to the board. Oh, sorry. Go ahead.
On item 15, I'm Joyce West. I'm Joyce West at Community Realty. And item 15, the cancellation of the purchase contract on the Fourth Street property. There is one thing that needs to be added to that that was in the original contract, and that was a payment of $2,500 to the seller, or to the, yeah, to the seller to get tenants evicted. And that was not paid for any of the tenants that have moved out. That was paid for two of the tenants that are still in possession. And both of them are arrears and rent, and it, because of the litigation, we were not able to evict them, and we have an issue. And so we would request that the county reimburse the seller for the amount of mon-- money that they have spent already on those two clients, which is $2,425. We didn't get quite to the $2,500. So you're con-- we're saving you some money. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further public comment? Seeing none, I'll bring it back to the board. Supervisor Bone?
I want to thank the City of Eureka for being here, and also want to thank Supervisor Bass for bringing that letter forward. We got these trailers in 2017. I was involved with it back then. And in 2018, the coastal voiced concerns. Over two years ago, this board unanimously approved $100,000 to assist the city after we'd exhausted all our local sites. So this isn't just being thrown out there. This isn't brand new. Everybody kind of knows about it. These are 42 housing units that are going to be run by Betty Chin, much like she runs the, Betty's Blue Angel Village that has been so successful. So I really want to applaud Supervisor Bass for bringing this forward because it's one of our biggest issues. We need to hit it now. This is a, this is an old fuel site. We'll be able to encapsulate it next to the sewer plant, but it's not far from the Palco Martian, places that they were already, some of them were already housed at. So I think adding dignity and putting a roof over their head is utmost of importance. So, thank you.
Supervisor Wilson?
Just on that, I mean, there's been no application put in yet, so, I mean, I understand.
Sure, I understand.
Yeah, okay. I mean, because I think some people have the implication of this, a little delay, but there's been no application put in yet to be delayed. So just want to be clear about that. And with that, I'm going to actually abstain from this vote because we have four fifths, and I just don't want to advocate to the group, to the agency with which I also have a seat on. So, thanks.
Supervisor Bass?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Actually, in reading the letter we sent, our letter was pretty limited compared to the rest, but I know I had, we had one person commenting on a variety of concerns regarding that, and my whole comment to this individual was, you know, this is in support of a speedy review. You know, we didn't say anything about specifics, but it needs to get done, you know. And I also have a letter I'm sending to the governor's task force that's basically saying, you know, coastal communities need help. We don't have a lot of options, and this is a, you know, I think there's just clear and present, you know, real concern that it could get delayed in the process. So to me, that's one of the reasons for sending this. But I do understand that there's not an actual application in yet.
And I don't want to confuse normal process with a delay in process. So you're, we're presuming, presuming a delay. What you're asking for is, I think, in this letter that I've read, is to move faster than what you perceive to be normal process.
Anything's probably, Supervisor Bone had a, it's like compared to what I'm used to seeing. I know you're on that body now, and I do not want to say anything disparaging.
No offense, but that's exactly what she's asking for, much like when people call us and says, "I'm putting a building permit in. Can you help me? Because I'd like to start building this spring rather than the fall." I mean, it's just, government isn't known for being the speediest process, so any, any help you can get, and that's just because our regulatory process hangs that on us.
I would just like to add that I appreciate the work of the City of Eureka on this, and I also agree with the commenter earlier, the Cal Home Grant is a really, really positive move in the right direction, and hopefully it will help a bunch of low-income people to make repairs or do additional units. And also, that money, as it's paid back, will help people in the future as well. So that's a really good program. I have a point of order here. Supervisor Wilson, you're accusing yourself from the vote because of that one item. Do you want to vote on the rest of the items separately? I can separate them.
I think we're all good because it's going to be four fifths. So, in the, just, we need to move forward, so let's do it.
From the full consent. Supervisor Bone?
And could we direct the CIO to look into, to make sure, because I thought we were going to make the, on the contract hole, and I don't know where Joyce's request was made or if that's even in our wheelhouse, but...
Sure, that's a Public Works item, but I'd be happy to do that.
Would you do that, please, for, because, and I want to thank her publicly for her generous donation to HSU Athletics this weekend, so.
Supervisor Bass?
Thank you, Madam Chair. On a different item, we do have the letter appreciation for Greg Seiler for service on the Headwaters Fund Board, and I do believe Greg is here. Oh, and we do want to say thank you very much for all your years of effort on the board and keeping things on the straighten, the straight path, and your energies in doing so, and just wanted to say thank you very much.
Echo that. He's leaving just because he's termed out. He can't do it any longer. So thank you, Greg.
To take a new identity.
Which points out that there is a vacancy now on the Headwaters Fund Board, and people who are interested can apply.
And I'd like to point out, we have a lot of vacancies on all kinds of other committees. Should you be committee mourning, you know, feeling like you need to be on one, we have, we have others you can apply for.
So we have a motion and a second. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
One abstention.
Abstention. And so it's four to one, but four in favor with one abstention.
Correct.
Thank you very much, Ryan, for keeping track of that. And we will now go on to public items on non-public comment, on non-agenda items. First up, we have Thomas Mulder.
Good morning. Thomas Mulder, CEO of Redwood Healing. I've got three different items I'm going to try to cover in my three minutes. First off, I was down at a debate in Southern Humboldt last week, and there is a flyer being passed out that has, in my opinion, a lot of misinformation. It has potential litigation, false information, I think, because I'm pretty confident in the abatement process, and I feel it's very legal, but there's a lot of misinformation being passed out to the community. It's being used by some of the people, challenge, some of the challengers. And I think it also, in reading it, it makes the illusion that maybe there's some hostility or disagreement between some board members and the director of building and planning. So I only have one copy. I refuse to make a copy of it, but I think it'd be important for everyone to see that, just to understand where some of the hostility might come from, from misinformation. I'm going to go back to update on personal use. I'm pushed for you again. I would love to see 200 square feet allowed for personal use for under an acre and 500 square feet for over an acre. Some other people I've talked to have also shown me some ideas of maybe even amending the abatement fee penalty for people under 5,000 square feet, under 2,000 square feet. They had a whole spreadsheet. I'm trying to talk them into bringing that public, but I, it definitely had some ideas there for someone with just a little bit out of bounds, but not, you know, 10,000 square feet or just clear to mountainside. So there's something to think about. And the last thing I'd like to bring up, the tax increase, Measure S tax. First off, we need to get our county computers to talk to each other. I haven't received my tax bills. I heard a rumor that they went up, so I went in here last week and got a copy of them. Somehow, I updated where my address is at the tax collector, but somehow there's a miscommunication there, so I don't know where those bills are. Maybe I don't have to pay them, but I did get a copy of them there. Something, it says in reading it in July that API increase will be presented. I've never, was presented with the potential increase. So when I'm building a budget, all of a sudden, I'm tasked with $4,147.22 increase in expenses that I wasn't able to budget for. So I think that's challenging. We do a lot of things donating to our community. That's going to cut into funds of being able to donate to the community that we're in. So just something, I don't know if it's within your power, but something to think about. It'd be nice to know way ahead of time if there is increase. The other thing to think about, that is a statewide API, or I can't remember the actual terminology, but it's a statewide thing. We have limited access to market here in the cannabis industry, so I think we should have a separate index that we're addressed by. Thank you.
Thank you. And the next on the list is Brian Roberts.
Welcome. Thank you, honorable members here. My name is Brian Roberts. I come to talk to you about Measure S. And my main problem with Measure S is we've entrusted the Building and Planning Department to process applications, tax the farms, and here appeals to any issues we have concerning them. I've been in contact with John Ford, and there were several issues I have with regard to my 2018 cultivation tax. First off, my permit was, my application was submitted December 22, 2016. When I first went into Building and Planning in November, I was denied an application assistance meeting because I'm on FA, which is forest agriculture, and not AE land. So that was my first mishap with the Building and Planning. After that, I waited until December 2017, did a status report. Not one thing had been done for my permit process. After that, in June of 2018, John Ford sent a letter, which was the update on cannabis permitting. That letter clearly stated if you do not hold a county permit and a state permit, all growing was illegal. Now, prior to that, when all pre-existing things, the county had leeway to whether pre-existing can continue or not. My first contact with Building and Planning came in late August 2018. It was a CAV form, and that is cultivation area verification. It clearly stated I had expanded my grow an extra 8,000 feet, which was untrue. This report was done on March 12, but wasn't handed to me until August. When I went the following day down to the Building and Planning, I showed them all documentation that they had taken my property and the property next to me, which was also in the permitting process, and combined the two growers and said I had expanded, which was not, because they were looking at two properties. As soon as I did that, they corrected it, gave me a permit. I got my interim permit on August 29, 2018. I had a 30-day permit into grow, cultivate, and process all my product for 2018. Problem is, I cut it down in June after John Ford sent a letter that stated if you are growing but don't hold county and state permit, you are illegal. So I could either continue to grow and be illegal, or I could cut my product down and wait until I got my permit, in which I did. I therefore, in September, got a tax bill stating that I owed $10,000. I immediately came down the following day, contacted Bob Russell, who is not a part of my thing, and I said, "This is a mistake." I was told not to cultivate in June, and he's like, "Well, we give you the right to cultivate. It doesn't mean if you cultivate or not."
I'm sorry, Mr. Roberts, we only have three. I know we have gotten a lot of communication from you, and you bring up a point that needs to be looked at, so thank you for your information.
Thank you. My only appeal was with John Ford, and the emails are in there, and you can see his mistakes.
Thank you very much. Any other public comment on not on the agenda? Items not on the agenda?
Ken Swawwacki, no legal advice, but my opinion is nobody has to pay any Measure S tax. Appeal it to the federal court. You can't tax somebody for any illegal federal activity. And of course, the county has a way to defend this. I started finding out how your legal process works, why you don't settle things, and of course, that's an irritant to me. You have a certificate of coverage from CSAC for excess insurance for liability. The coverage is only $1 million, and there's $100,000 limits inclusive of the member's self-insured retention of 100. So I really, I needed to get clarification, couldn't get it before the meeting, and I'll get it another time. The public needs to know the premium on this $1 million insurance policy is a little over $2 million per year. I don't know if you've had your risk assessment go through this process and see which benefit you've been getting from this policy. If you're not getting $2 million worth of benefit, then you're wasting our money. I don't know. Has this assessment been made as far as this liability policy? It's a very strange policy. I've never heard one of this nature, but I'm getting educated quite quickly on it. So relevant to that, I'm going to help you understand my perspective a little bit as far as how settlement goes, because I don't think this board quite understands how settlement works. You currently have what I call Amy Gate. Last time, there was something nowhere near contentious. The prior county council, who we all, I think, know who she is, I think settled out for $250,000. Now, that was not made public, but that's what it was. When you settle, I think a judge gets extremely irritated when you don't settle, especially when he says, "Settle this," and you don't. And so as far as a strategy goes, as far as somebody goes, a settlement is not admissible in court. If you have discussions for settlement, you can't use those later. If somebody comes in and lowballs and said, "All I want is this, this, and this," and you don't settle for that, and you don't show that you've done your due diligence to settle in a relevant amount, then you're in trouble with the judge. They don't like this, since 95 or 90% of them do settle, and you're not settling something that's not good. So if you look toward bullying your way through a million dollars' worth of money here, and you have a settlement that, in my opinion, could come to 15 years' worth of somebody's worth, at maybe 250,000 a year, I don't know, what is that, 3.75 million or something? And if you have not done your due diligence, a judge, in my opinion, don't know, you want to have your legal counsel, can they get trouble damages? You're very unwise to settle something that may end up being $15 million because of a whistleblower complaint in federal court without getting out for anything less than that. And don't count on your million dollars, because that is not, you're going to need most of that for settlement. Thank you for my opportunity to speak.
Is there any further comment on items not on the agenda? Welcome.
Thank you. Good morning. This isn't what I came up to talk about, but I left it, forgot to bring it. So I'll go with this. PG&E turned off the power this morning at 8:00 in Carlota, just actually where I live in Carlota, the eastern end. It's supposed to be off until 6:00. And we got a notice, and it was to install new overhead equipment. And so we were still going, went to the office in Fortuna, and I asked them, and she said that they were replacing poles. I also called the 800 number, and they were busy, busy, but they called back, and they did. And they said they were replacing poles, metal ones, so not at all this overhead equipment. As I left this morning, oh gosh, it was an engineering company out there, and they're installing radiation for all the things on top of the poles. Yeah, I mean, you, if you think you have authority about energy, I, I'm concerned. I'm concerned. I have a meter that measures radiation, and I will measure it and get back with you. It's not, it just isn't acceptable, not where I am. I'm just in the forest. It's deep in the forest. There isn't reception, and it isn't about reception, anyway. That's not it. The other thing was, Saturday's meeting that, in Riddle Dell, where the facilitator said that my question wasn't on point. My question was, how can you be talking about budget when the annual financial report is still not finished? This is February. I consider it pretty unacceptable, because I probably have the last nine years of the annual financial reports for the county, and initially, I could get them in September, then October, and then later, later, later. Now, here we are, February. I just, I don't know, I find it inexcusable. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further comment on items not on the agenda? Seeing none, we'll bring it back to the board. And now we'll go to our special presentations and matters brought forward, excuse me a minute, by Board of Supervisors. This one comes to us from Supervisor Bone, a resolution and presentation on creating the 2020 census partnership. Supervisor Bone?
Well, it's 2020, and we have a census coming. And it's going to be census on steroids, as I say. They are, it is going to be a lot more enveloping. It's going to, you've already heard the ads on the radio and TV, and California Center for Rural Policy is taking the lead for a lot of Northern California. So we have Connie Stewart here and her census guru. And I think we've all been, I think I've been in probably six different meetings across the United States about census and how they're going to do it. And there's been so much outreach since the middle of 2018, making sure they get everybody counted, even in the hitherlands, and, and all people are counted equally. So I think that's a, that's a big step in the right direction. So we have a resolution that I'll read now. You want it now? Whereas the United States Census Bureau is required by the United States Constitution to conduct a count of the population and provides a historic opportunity to help shape the foundation of our society and play an active role in American democracy. Whereas Humboldt County is committed to ensuring every resident is counted, and whereas federal and state funding is allocated to communities and decisions are made on matters of national and local importance based in part on census data and housing. Whereas census data helps determine how many seats each state will have in the United States House of Representatives and is necessary for the accurate and fair districting of state legislative seats, county and city councils, and voting districts. Whereas information from the 2020 census and American Community Survey are vital tools for the economic development, increased employment, and whereas the information collected by the census is confidential and protected by law. Whereas a united voice from business, government, community-based and faith-based organizations, educators, media, and others will enable the 2020 census message to reach more of our citizens. Now, therefore, resolved that Humboldt County is committed to partnering with the United States Census Bureau and the state of California, and will support the 2020 census and encourage and participate in events and initiatives that will raise the overall awareness of the importance of participation, therefore leading to a complete and accurate count of all persons within our county. Hopefully voted and passed today, February 11. You're on, Connie.
Welcome, Connie.
Thank you. Thank you. I'm Connie Stewart from the California Center for Rural Policy, and with me is Alana Smith. This is her first Board of Supervisors meeting, and Alana grew up here in Humboldt County, so I thought we should bring her along. She's definitely helping to coordinate all the activity in Humboldt County for the census. We have brought you swag, and if I made Supervisor Bone nervous, it was because we had to get the swag through security here, which was a little harder than we thought it was going to be, since we have keychains and lights. So let me start by handing you the swag, and...
I imagine they took all the census tasers out, though, right?
Fortunately, we don't have any knives, just can openers. So, and then, these, yes. These are for...
Any food?
She has some.
Wow.
Yeah, and more swag is coming. So, so, you know, thank you so much for the resolution, and let me just say, we are in full swing, as you can tell by the fabulous swag. Please use it early and often that you've got. We are bound and determined to do a better job than we did in 2010, getting all of our hard-to-count citizens come and participate this year. About, California is about 12% of the US population, and we have 30% of the hard-to-count people in our state, and we have many of them in our region. This is the first census that will be done using broadband, which is a very scary proposition. Rural areas are already undercounted, so adding the lack of broadband, especially in Supervisor Finell's district, and Supervisor Madrone's district, and Supervisor Bone's district, we are really, really going to work really hard to get to, to folks out in your regions as well. And some additional money is gone. We, I want to say thank you to the Northern California Indian Development Council that has done a great job of making sure all of the tribes are participating. We've been talking to veterans, and we've been talking to the Latino community, and we're all undercounted, but those populations in specific are really undercounted. So why does this matter? Because this is the money that gets, comes to the county to pay for roads and for schools and for health and human services. California loses about $2 billion a year, and Humboldt County loses a large portion of money, too, because we are traditionally undercounted. So this year, the governor's put $154 million into making sure California gets counting, counted. We are also hoping to pick up another congressional district in California. If we count well, we should be able to do that. So anyway, please, if you have events in your districts that you'd like stuff at or people to table at, we have booths that we can come and set up. We have... or people to table at, we have booths that we can come and set up, we have tabletops, we have swag, more swag is coming every day from the U.S. Census and from the state of California. And we're happy to go. Census Day is April 1st, but the count, people will start getting a note to count starting in about March 12th. So, and then, what happens is people will get a note in the mail, asking them to go online and take the count. Then they will get another note, and then they will get a third note. And after that, people will start knocking on doors. In some of our communities, it's really hard to knock on doors, and we don't necessarily want people knocking on doors. So, we're going to urge people to come into town if they don't have broadband, and fill out the forms. I can tell you one of the difficulty, oh, I should also thank the libraries and the schools as well. I can tell you, one of the difficulties we're having is, of course, most of the emphasis is on making sure the urban areas are counted. And so, the rules around creating centers to help, they're not, let's just say, they're really not rural-friendly. Even though we have many places where we take private information, most of them don't qualify. So, we're in a big battle with the state of California, getting all the rural communities to say, "Hey, you have to make it a little easier for us to help our citizens to count." So, that's our struggle for this month. And, but we hope everything will go well, and we'll have a really successful count here in Humboldt. I'm here to answer any of your questions. Thanks so much for taking the time and giving us the resolution.
Any questions for Connie? Okay, Supervisor Wilson?
Thank you, Connie, for bringing this to us. It is really important. Oftentimes, I remind people that your local elections are extremely important, because you're voting for, bringing in the team of people that bring those resources and spend them in your county. But this is where we ask everybody else to be on the team, I mean, everybody, to be on the team, so that we can actually avail of those resources, we can get them, and then, you know, bring them back to the county. Otherwise, if you don't, if you're not counted, then we can't bring those services and those fundings back to this community. So, thank you for helping build the team.
Yes, there are all sorts of services that are proportionally given, including roads' money, victim witness money, some money for the sheriffs and others. So, that money only comes if you get counted, yeah.
One of the, oh, Supervisor Bass, sorry.
Thank you, Madam Chair. And actually, Supervisor Wilson mentioned the local, you know, and being part of the team, and redistricting, it just kind of reminded me, when the count is happening, when does, when do they expect to finish the counting? And I remember going through redistricting here, and I know this isn't your bailiwick to do that piece. Yeah, I know you remembered, my neighborhood got suddenly quiet, but it was like, when should local communities expect to go through that process again? Or is that something we need to ask our recorder?
For redistricting?
Yeah.
What traditionally happens is the count happens, and, okay, so after, after the, what will start happening is after the initial push in April, every week, we will start getting a, "Hey, these are communities that aren't being counted, these are communities that aren't being counted." And that, so we will do more activities in those communities. And then, they'll start sending people door-to-door. If that, they'll be sending people door-to-door probably through most of the fall, and then we give up. So, then it takes a while to process that information. So, it's normally about, then California has a Citizens Committee, which you can apply for, to help with redistricting. And so, that committee then goes to work. It's normally the next election in 2022 that will have redistricting happening on it. So, there's the national process, I mean, the national process and the, for the state and national congressional districts, and then, the local folks go to town, too, and then you all do what you need to do, to make sure that there's equal numbers of people in the districts.
And I was going to follow up on that. I was at a redistricting, a census meeting a couple weeks ago with CSAC, and they had someone there, and it sounds like it's a bit different this time, because they mentioned the commission, but they also said the commission, you know, we've always thought, if you live in a district, you're usually considered, they usually try to keep you in your district that you're voting in. Their directive now is that it does not, it should not be counted. So, that's what I said, I'm going, well, it could be an interesting time.
Yes.
And, because it used to be that, usually, if you were a sitting supervisor, they didn't try to redistrict you out. And I don't think they do it, but it's now supposedly not be, not supposed to be in the equation. That is, you know, who knows how that's really going to work, and who's really going to do the job? Is it the commission that makes the decisions now, and not back to the board? Because we had to make the final decision.
Yeah, I think on local elections, you all have to make the final decision, but on the state...
And I know this is not your specialty, but it's like...
No, but I should also mention, my specialty is using the data from the census. And so, you know, community members call us all the time and ask us to provide them information about the community. My data is only as good as the census data is. So, that's another reason that California Center for Rural Policy begs and pleads you to please fill out the census forms. Yeah, thanks.
Supervisor Bone?
I'm shocked and dismayed that they would actually, politics would play into redistricting. How many counties are you, through the California Center, how many counties are you representing in the North Coast?
Well, thanks to you, we have the honor of representing Humboldt County, and we also have worked with the Board of Supervisors in Delnort County to represent Delnort County. Trinity County decided not to take the funding that was available from the state, and so, the state did decide to give us that. So, we are doing three counties, which is why your logo has three counties, your Everyone Counts logo has three counties, so that we could make sure that we were just using swag and could go back and forth between the counties.
And I know CSAC is very involved in this, but again, the biggest problem with the count is the rural areas, and getting our fair share. We felt like we were undercounted last time, and you, as you said, your outreach, I know you've also outreach to people that aren't necessarily wanting people to knock on their door. So, you're using the avenues of their associations and everything else to get that word out to them. And if you go through the census process, that doesn't hurt or help your chances of being called for jury duty. I mean, there are myths out there that need to be, all this does is basically count, lets us know. And I don't think they quite understand a proper count, how much value that can bring to us, both in all the, all the different myriads of federal and state government that we ask for in our county to help. So, again, big job, glad you're doing it.
Thank you. As I have said, in Delnort County, to get religious for you, the census has been, has been an issue since Jesus walked on the earth, if you recall how he was born. So, you know, it is, it is an important historical part of our lives, and it is actually the law to participate, and the law has been strengthened to assure that the information stays confidential and cannot be used negatively. So, we really do encourage everyone to participate. Thanks.
Supervisor Madrona?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I really appreciate the Center for Rural Policy being involved in this. I know it helps enhance the effort tremendously, so thank you for that, and welcome. Also, one of the, one of the things in the rural areas, I started office hours once a month in Willow Creek at the library. And so, I appreciate you mentioning the libraries, because it's such a great resource in our rural communities, as well as our cities. But I would love to communicate with you, I'm starting up office hours in Hoopa, Wichita and Orleans. And so, I think if we can dovetail our efforts, the first one, there was 15 people that came into the, into the office hours. So, that's a way that we could dovetail and increase the numbers of people coming in for dual purposes.
Absolutely, thanks.
So, give me an email, and we'll coordinate.
Okay, fantastic. Thanks so much.
So, Connie, again, let me just reiterate for people, so this year, you will be able to do it online, and so, that's kind of the first one. So, for, if people who live out in the rural areas do have access to broadband, or, you know, however they do it, registered, then that, that's taken care of you, they don't have to have somebody come and visit them or anything.
If they participate, yes.
Yeah. And then, so how are you doing for census workers?
Okay, so, we're in charge of outreach. The U.S. Census is in charge of getting census workers. They are still hiring, thank you for mentioning that. And you can probably go online and just put in U.S. Census employment, and they are hiring, and they are training, as we speak, for folks to participate. In Humboldt County, I believe they're still hiring, and we'll be hiring until the beginning of March, I think. So, if you need a job, it's well-paid to go participate. The hours are a little wonky, but, but you'll be given, when the time comes, you'll be given precincts to help make, assure that they're counted, too. So, yes, so please do that, but our outreach, we, we're just in charge of outreach, we're not allowed to have anything to do with employees.
I will just mention, mentioning the outlying areas, and I've had a visit from a census worker in Fortuna, and she keeps on saying, "We need more people." So, that's very important. And finally, with regard to the timing, so this is going to go all the way to the end of the year.
Yes. Well, yes, because we desperately try to count. We would love to be done counting before June, you know. I mean, we would love it if people were really aggressive and just went online, and it'll only take a few minutes to go online, it's 10 easy questions, and so, we urge people to do that. You will be getting a paper copy in the mail if you don't participate. For people who think, yes, as Supervisor Bone said, "Look, we know where you are already, Google Maps lets us know." So, the census is using all sorts of technology to, and they already have determined where you live. So, that you'll get mailed a ballot, if, I mean, you'll get mailed a census form, not a ballot, forgive me, if you do not go online, after four mailings to you. So, save some resources to there. And then, after that, people will start walking, and the walking will happen in summer and fall.
Great.
So, yes, but we don't want people walking. We don't want people walking here, we want people to take the census online, if they can, when they're dropping their kid off at school, at the Family Resource Center, at the library. If you don't have broadband, we'll give you plenty of opportunities to participate, so...
And so, that's definitely a part of your work, is to get the word out about that.
Mm-hmm.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And good luck.
Thanks.
Thank you. Any public comment on this item?
Thanks for the swag.
Yeah, there's lots of swag, don't go away.
Ken Sowalski, I'm hoping this will undo a problem I saw in the past, because I didn't feel our point-in-time count was anywhere near as accurate. I felt there was a, I hate to say agenda, but just to make the DHHS look good, that we're taking care of everybody out there, it was a low count, and we saw how that worked for us. So, I'm hoping this will unwind this. The census is utmost important, because now, as we realize all the money coming forward to help with all of our problems, now, you've spoken about that, but that point-in-time count needed to be fixed, because we're not getting our share. As far as more, I guess, but you call it spot districting, in other words, go ahead and take Virginia, then spike spot zoning, put her in the third or something, and then that's, or wherever you put her. I don't, I don't see, hopefully, that happening, and we can all work to make sure that doesn't happen. I'm happy with our districts the way they are, and if there's a small amount of tweaking needs to be done, you know, it's happened before. I can't see us getting any more seats in Congress, because California's population is declining, Humboldt County's population is flat, and as far as the ratio goes, a lot of people are leaving California, I mean, that's known. It's an interesting thing, because I remember years ago, or last time they did it, I was down on Suzie Q Road in Trinity County, very rural as you can get down there. We probably had three or four different census people come down into that flat. And of course, they, if they really want to find out what's going on, a lot of them should be working with the volunteer fire departments, because they know where the people are, how to get a hold of them. In my case, you know, they came to me, because I kind of do what I do, same as here, ushering people around. So, this person's here, that's a vacant lot, this, that, and the other. But whatever we can do to work to get a good homeless count is imperative these days. And we're going to need a lot of people to get out there, because these are the people we need to find, we need to impress upon them, for them to get the help they need, they need to come and volunteer. And they're not going to, of course, do it online, they're going to have to have a paper copy handed to them, people are going to have to have them work through this. Hopefully, we will accomplish what we need here, which is to get our fair share. So, strongly support this, I strongly support as many of you can, maybe, maybe certain areas don't lead to it, but such as Supervisor Madrona, holding court in a whole bunch of different areas on an ongoing basis, reaching out to the local people to accomplish this. It takes, it takes you guys being out there, not just in one little spot, but spreading out as thin as you can, and working as much as you can, because this is where the money comes from. We need the carrots to go with our sticks. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any further comment on this item? Seeing none, I'll bring it back to the board. And I would entertain a motion.
I make a motion, we accept the report.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None passes unanimously. Thank you very much, Connie, and maybe we'll have you back again later on in the year to give us an update. Thank you. That will take us to department reports. We're going with the County Administrative Office, who'll be giving us an update on the mid-year budget review for fiscal year 2019, 2020, and a budget outlook for 2021, and recommendations for budget adjustments. And welcome, Alicia Hayes.
Good morning, thank you, Madam Chair. I'm Alicia Hayes, Deputy CAO in the County Administrative Office, and today, I bring before you the mid-year financial review and initial outlook for the next fiscal year. This year, I'm very excited to say that the County of Humboldt has been presented with the GFOA Distinguished Budget Presentation Award. Last fiscal year, we completely revamped our budget book, making it a model of excellence, meeting the highest principles of governmental budgeting, and satisfying nationally-recognized guidelines for effective budget presentation. This is a testament to the hard work and dedication of your board's staff, who strive not only for a transparent and comprehensive document, but also one that the public enjoys reading and evaluating. So, with that, I would like to play a quick video from the GFOA's Executive Director acknowledging this accomplishment.
Greetings from the Government Finance Officers Association. I'm Chris Morley, GFOA's Executive Director. It's my honor to announce that Humboldt County, California, has received the Distinguished Budget Presentation Award. The purpose of this award program is to encourage and assist governments to prepare comprehensive and understandable budget documents, to improve transparency and trust in government. To earn the Distinguished Budget Presentation Award, Humboldt County met demanding criteria, such a record reflects the professionalism, commitment, and dedication of your organization's leaders. This is the first time that Humboldt County has won this award. Program reviewers in particular praise this strategically. I think we hope that this award that Humboldt County will serve as an example and encourage others to strive for the same high standard in their own way. Therefore, in my privilege, behalf of the Government Finance Officers Association, to present the Humboldt County Distinguished Budget Presentation Award. Congratulations.
Thank you, thank you very much. We're incredibly proud, as the director said in that video, this is the first time that the County of Humboldt has received this award, and this is a testament to staff across the county. Everybody works very hard, we've already kicked off the 2021 cycle, and we'll be diligently working through June on that. So, thank you for that acknowledgement. Oh, no, don't need to hear it again. Moving along, as stated in the first quarter budget report for fiscal year 1920, the fiscal year, the general fund began the fiscal year with a positive fund balance of $21.1 million, which included $1.3 million in Measure Z funding. The fiscal year 1920 budget was adopted with a $5.8 million planned spend-down of this balance. And contained in the first quarter budget report was an additional allocation of $9.5 million in Measure Z and general fund expenditures. These budget adjustments increased the planned spend-down of fund balance to $15.3 million. As identified by the departments in the mid-year reviews, general fund net costs through June 30, 2020, are now estimated to be, to use fund balance of $12 million instead of $15.3 million. And this is primarily due to $2 million in savings for the payoff of the 2016 finance plan. Your board might recall that you allocated funding in first quarter to pay this off. There was a $2 million draw... There was a $2 million draw that, due to timing issues, was not effectively drawn down prior to the payoff, so there is a savings there. In addition, there is anticipated to be $121,000 in additional Measure Z revenues, an additional $662,000 in sales and property tax revenues. The Department of Health and Human Services anticipates a savings of $84,000 for their Measure Z expenditures, primarily due to salary savings. And all other general fund departments have reflected a savings of $387,000. Digging down on Measure Z specifically, the fiscal year 1920 budget was adopted with revenues exceeding expenditures by $164,000. Due to expenditure savings in 1819, the fiscal year 1920 beginning fund balance was actually $1.3 million. Since budget adoption, your board has allocated $439,000 to roads. In addition, you approved $1 million in carryforward funding for the Humboldt County Fire Chiefs Association and for an audit of Measure Z expenditures. As reported by the departments through mid-year review, again, $84,000 is anticipated in savings from DHHS, and additional revenues of $121,000 are anticipating, leaving $205,528 available for allocation should your board so choose. Contained in your packets today via attachment number one is the Citizens Advisory Committee's recommendations detailing out their preference for the use of these funds, which would indicate an allocation to roads should there be any savings. Moving on to the other funds, the Department of Health and Human Services ended fiscal year 1819 with a fund balance of $3.6 million. This was a decrease of $5.5 million from the previous year. DHHS anticipates that the fiscal year 1920 year-end fund balance will be $6.6 million, an improvement of $3 million over budgeted projections. This is primarily due to a trust fund transfer of $6.7 million that was anticipated to occur in the prior fiscal year, but had not taken place, and will occur in the current fiscal year. This is also partially offset by an anticipated deficit in mental health of $3.8 million. In order to address the deficit, DHHS has instituted a hiring freeze to evaluate each vacant position, to ensure that there's enough revenue to match dollars, and matching dollars to fully fund all positions in mental health. The Department of Economic Development, or, excuse me, not Department, but Economic Development, they report their budgets to be on track, with an estimated year-end fund balance of $112,050. The roads fund anticipates a year-end fund balance of $708,000, not $708,000,000. This happened last report, too, so now I see a typo on the presentation. My apologies. This is an improvement of $431,000 over the adopted budget, and this increase is primarily due to additional SB1 revenues. And then finally, aviation ended fiscal year 1819 with a fund balance of $1.1 million, which represents an improvement of $1.8 million over the prior year. Mid-year projections indicate the year-end fund balance for fiscal year 1920 will be $1.3 million, an improvement over budgeted projections of $249,000. Over the recent years, the aviation department has taken many steps to improve their fiscal health, including hiring a director and additional staffing who can focus on generating revenues for that division. Moving on to the outlook for fiscal year 2021, it's estimated that the fund balance available to finance the fiscal year is estimated at $8.3 million. That does assume that your board approves the recommendations contained in today's report. In fiscal year 2021, property taxes anticipated to increase by $1.1 million, sales taxes estimated to increase by $700,000, TOT, trans occupancy tax, and all other miscellaneous revenue is anticipated to increase by $361,000. The fines for code enforcement is anticipated to decrease by $700,000, and this is largely in part to the stabilization of the cannabis industry. And speaking of cannabis, the excise tax is estimated to increase by $5.8 million in fiscal year 2021, as the tax billing resumes after a one-year reprieve. Total known revenue increases are estimated at $7.3 million, not including Measure Z. Measure Z is anticipated for a modest increase of $65,000. And that revenue source is largely contingent on local market shifts, so the cannabis industry resuming tax billing certainly will have an impact on that. Total discretionary revenue to the general fund is estimated at $77.7 million. For expenditures, the total cost increase, known cost increase to the general fund are estimated at $5.1 million. Workers' compensation, liability insurance, and other cost allocation charges are increasing by $1.2 million. Calpers is estimated to increase by $1.6 million, or 11%. Salaries are estimated to increase by $1.4 million, or 3%. Health insurance is estimated to increase by $319,000. And all other benefit costs, including disability and social security, will increase by $142,000. In total, salary and benefits are estimated to increase by $3.8 million, or 5% for the general fund. And total known expenditures to the general fund are $77.7 million. At this point, staff anticipate a balanced budget, with discretionary revenues equalling expenditures of $77.7 million. However, if staff continue to work through the budget process, these projections may certainly change. Contained in your report today for fiscal year 2021 is a recommendation from the County Administrative Office to set departmental allocations from the general fund increased by 5% based off the current year general fund allocations, and to consider requests for additional general fund appropriations, with a preference given to one-time infrastructure improvement expenditures. In addition, staff recommend setting an annual departmental contribution to the public agency retirement services, also known as PARS, of up to 2% of salaries. There are a number of budget adjustments also contained in today's report, detailed out here in length. However, some of those highlights are $104,750 in census funding, so timely that Connie was here to discuss that, $193,750 to be carried forward for the countywide classification and compensation study, which was approved by your board in the prior fiscal year, $200,000 in funding for construction of the Fortuna Veterans Hall, $180,000 in funding for juvenile hall, $535,000 in funding for emergency culvert repairs, and $27,721 to allocate one public information specialist to the County Administrative Office to manage public records requests, support the Humboldt County Fair Association, and manage the appointment of indigent defense counsel. So with that, I conclude the report, and will gladly answer any questions your board may have.
Thank you, Alicia. Any questions from the board? Supervisor Bone?
Thanks. I know how hard you've been working on it, because I see you on the weekends. So thanks, Alicia, and your staff, and CAOs. And congratulations on the award. First time ever getting that, just because of all the work. I remember in 2012, when we adjusted our retirement benefits for all the employees, I think to 2% from two and three quarters, to address this in 2012. And we said it would take 10 to 12 years to start showing fruition. We're going to be coming up on that, and so that's going to help. It doesn't help the people that were hired after that, but it certainly helps us meet our demands and meet our demands for our former employees. I'm always, we're five years into PARS, we're seeing the results on that, and now understanding why so many counties in the state have done that, and I appreciate that. This many years of a balanced budget has not been easy, especially with so many variables that have been thrown at us, adjustments, being able to provide ADA-quality facilities and access on our roads and our buildings, and in a couple cases, being able to fix up our veterans halls. So I really appreciate all the work every year that comes in on this. Every time, we have to thank the citizens for supporting Measure Z, Measure O, which has morphed back into Measure Z. But public safety, we always said that it was going to be performance-driven, and as we see the performance levels that are happening, it's great. So thank you, guys, for everything you do, and as we move forward. It is definitely a moving target from week to week, not knowing what's going to drop on us, but you guys have been able to adjust well. Again, congratulations on the budget award.
Any further questions or comments from the board? Supervisor Madron?
Thank you, Madam Chair. And again, yeah, also, congratulations on the award, and thank you for all the hard work that everybody in the department's been doing to prepare us for our coming budgets. I certainly want to see more money go into roads, you know, over time, and I appreciate that there are some allocations here. The big one is the State Park reimbursement, I believe, for the Redway Shelter Cove Road project. I think that's what that was for. I'm not sure why we wouldn't stick with a 3% for all the departments rather than 5%. I still think we're in pretty frugal times, and I know we all would like more money for everything, but I guess my preference would probably try and keep the belt tightened up here, because I'm not sure what's coming over the next couple of years in terms of those things. In the budget process, I would love to see some allocations for Housing First and also Shelter Now, you know, for both parts of that committee. You know, housing is a significant chunk, usually takes tens of millions to do something, whereas providing emergency shelter right now, we could do that for a lot less. So I'd like to see something in the budget for that. And I know when we talked about Measure Z about a month and a half ago, the chairperson had come to us asking for us to consider some sort of a capping process or something, because if we don't create a system, eventually, the increased salaries every year for the sheriff, the DA, and probation will eventually use up the entire amount, and there won't be anything in the competitive chunk there. And so that concerns me. And I think, if I remember right, we directed staff, well, department heads, to come back to us at some point with suggestions on how to handle that inevitable issue, and I would like to see that happen sooner than later. I know we're going into another round of Measure Z applications here, and considerations on all of those, and it'd certainly be nice to be responsive to that committee and provide them with some direction in a timely manner. None of us want to see caps, but I know, for instance, if there was some way to allocate a specific chunk to roads each year, 10% of the overall Measure Z or something, that would certainly give the roads department the ability to use that money to leverage and grants and stuff, whereas right now, they don't have a clue how much money they're going to get out of Measure Z each year. And so that makes it impossible for them to budget and leverage. And so I would like to see us make some changes there. And if there are additional monies left, I think there's something like $220,000. I certainly would love to see roads get more, but I also would like to speak strongly for trying to make the funding whole for one of the proposals that was funding, that was the Orleans Volunteer Fire Department's facility out there in Orleans, which is just an incredibly important facility for that community. It's not just a volunteer fire department to park their engines and things, but it is really a command center for that whole community. And they asked for $200,000, they got $140,000. I would love to see them made more whole. So those are just some of my initial comments that I'm looking at in terms of the budget, but I definitely want to hear more from the public, as well as my colleagues. Thank you.
Supervisor Bass?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I don't know where this fits in the conversation, but I think it's important that we pay attention to the challenges around Humboldt County not receiving our drug medcal dollars yet for addiction. And I think, to me, that is one of the biggest things that is sticking out there, because the county is going to, you know, has been keeping, we've been covering for months and months and months, and it still doesn't look like a really promising, that there's a promising end in sight when we will start getting those dollars that many other counties are getting. And I didn't warn or mention this to Connie, but I see she's still sitting here, and I was hoping Director Beck would come up and kind of explain a little bit of the jam we're in in regards to that type of funding and the challenge. She's still there? Did she run out? Okay. As soon as I said her name, I thought she disappeared. Hannah, I'm sorry I didn't remind you of this, Connie, but to me, this is one of a big issue that's an unknown that we have to be aware of.
We're still dealing with the state and the Department of Healthcare Services on the fiscal plan. They keep moving the date on us, so I don't have a clear picture of when Humboldt County will be able to utilize drug medcal.
And if you could just go into, because some people think it's just us, we're part of a region, that we formed a regional unit, because they thought it sounded like an innovative idea, and this will teach you innovation costs you a whole lot more money, because they don't know what to do with you. And it's just frustrating.
Part of the rules around drug medcal is being able to provide all the services that was supposed to be provided to individuals through the Affordable Care Act. We don't have all of those services in Humboldt County, and most smaller counties do not have those, all of those services. So we combined counties together and came up with a plan that we thought would be a great plan with partnership health plan, that we would be able to identify services in other counties and send people to where they needed those services. It sounded like a good plan. We've been working on it for four or five years, and we thought that it would be July, and then it moved to September, October, and then now we're looking at April or May. It could be even later than that. It's really frustrating. We've had calls with Senator McGuire and others trying to move this forward. Department of Healthcare Services staff say that they're working on it diligently, and it seems recently they submitted a plan without talking with counties first. So there's a whole lot of frustration and the need to move forward.
And so my basic point is, there's dollars out there that we mean need to, if we want to keep our addiction services going. We have to kind of keep that in mind also, because it really concerns me. We have a lot of opportunities to help people, and if we can't, you know, so. I'm not really, in hearing Supervisor Madron, I appreciated all the things you were mentioning about where you'd like to maybe move monies. I think there's some other things that I'm interested in keeping an eye on before I, you know, do a lot of that. Thank you, Connie. I just wanted people to know, it is not that we're not trying, it is more that the, you know, one glove, you know, one hand's not talking to the other. It was a very frustrating phone call.
Right. And I would just like to add that, you know, community partners, our Community Corrections Partnership Group, CCP, there's been several, DHHS has put a lot of money into services for the services to be ready when drug medcal came onboard, and now we just need it to be approved.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Connie. Any further discussion at the board before I put it to the, to public comment? Supervisor Bone?
I'm just, I think everybody up here has distinct wishes, and I appreciate, after eight years of screaming about roads, somebody else is picking up the bandwagon, realizing what we have out there. But the opioids, the housing, I mean, it's, there's such a myriad of everything else, and until somebody tells us where we can cut where to fund all these things, we have to realize our biggest asset right now is trying to work with the state, because they're the only one that has a $19 billion surplus, because of Prop 47, 57, 109, and I can name a whole bunch that have been laid on us under the guise of this will help us handle it better on a county level. So our biggest asset is used at working with CSEC, RCRC, especially, you know, both great organizations. But rural California is sometimes bats last a lot of the time on a lot of these monies. So roads, the SB1 influx has been huge, but that doesn't nearly cover our $200 million worth of back liabilities on road repairs, so. So, hopefully we can get this all funded, but the big thing is, is trying to access the state. Drug Medical's a perfect point Supervisor Bass brings up because we've all been promised it, and now it's like a little thing dangling out there we can't have. So, and that will be major for our addiction treatment facilities.
And now I'll open it up to public comment. Welcome.
Kansas Woski, I do have a question for Connie Beck, which you may wish to ask or not. We have a hiring freeze on mental health. This is where we should be actually not having a hiring freeze, but we should be budgeting more money because if we don't take care of their mental health problems, then we have all the other complications regarding the jails being full and all the other problems we have. Strongly question, why are we cutting back and freezing? We're not freezing any other departments. I noticed in your budget, you keep, we keep saying we have a balanced budget. I guess I have a definition different than what you have. Balanced budget, in my opinion, is you're not borrowing money to keep your budget afloat and you're not spending more than's coming in. All I see here is that you're decreasing your beginning balance fund, which was $21 million and change, down to $8 million and change the end of the year. I consider that to be deficit spending. Maybe there's some other reasoning here that's not reflected. You might wish to get a definition from your auditor controller or somebody who understands what a balanced budget is and what deficit spending is. The way you're going right here, you have less than one year worth of the same balanced budget or deficit spending, and you're in the negative on your general fund. Now, as far as reserves go, most reserves, I've been told, fire districts, what they say they should have a whole year's worth of reserve in the reserve account. That's what I've been told, that's what they, when they come forward to the taxpayers, that's what they ask for. Do we have in our general fund, which is of course just a portion of the $400,000-plus budget, but let's just say it's, whatever it is, 173 or whatever it is, so we should have that much in a fund? Or not that much? You look at Fortuna or these other places, I think they have four months, six months, eight months worth of reserves? We have no reserves here compared to other entities. I know the state has a great reserve, like you say, but that's not how you go through what may be happening here. You have a statement here by your CEO's, your office here, basically saying that we are not to be spending money on employees. That's my executive summary of what it says here. And yet, there are two positions being put through forward by do as I say, not as I do, your CEO's office for additional positions or refunding of positions. I think that should be, it's kind of like the fox in the hen house. How come that always happens? Don't let anybody else fund their positions. We have freezing in mental health, and yet we're adding more positions to your staff? I really don't understand your administrative staff being shown preferential treatment in this process contrary to what the suggestions are. I do have concerns. We have a virus out there. Do you know we have a virus? And it may be a financial virus. And this could be the domino that sends all this down the road. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further public comment on the budget?
Lynda Casera, Carlotta. I'm here, I'm going to sleep. Didn't hear the Garberville Vets Building getting any money. And to get an award for something, this reminds me, not to be in your parade, but like Obama getting the Nobel Peace Prize. Midterm was December, not February. Annual financial report is still not done. There's 150 unaudited accounts. Yeah, if we had a constitutional sheriff, if we had, if you guys were oath keepers, if you weren't saluting a four-colored flag, to me, I mean, we passed the Thelma and Louise moment, we're sitting here talking about numbers on a screen being moved around. It's not really all about that. And I would like to invite you to the People's Republic Meeting. It is held every, the second Tuesday of every month in Fortuna, the River Lodge, at 7:00, which is tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Did you want to speak? Oh, no, you were just making room for Lynda to get in. So I will bring it back to the board. Any further discussion? I did want to say personally, thank you very much for all of your hard work and congratulations because I think in this age of information, it also seems to be an age of misinformation. And I see quite a bit of today's electoral scheme. And I think, you know, getting this kind of recognition from people who know exactly what's going on is really beneficial. Makes me feel good that the work that you're doing is so, so good and that it is actually receiving awards. And with regard to the request for personnel to handle PRA requests, that's another part of this whole world we're living in. Everybody sends in PRA requests over and over. So, we're getting a lot of extra requests and that's got to be paid for somehow. I do think that the roads, as Measure Z Subcommittee, or Measure Z Advisory Committee recommended, I think we should, in fact, pass along the $205,000-plus to the Roads Department. We hear a lot about the roads. That's because a lot of people drive them. And not only that, or drive to, right, exactly. And there is a lot of work going on out there, too. I really want to say that the Roads Department is doing a lot of good work and working with the funds from SB1, which helps with all of the culvert repair. And then you've got FEMA-funded projects, those really big ones. But there's always the day-to-day maintenance and it just is amazing, really, when you think about just even fixing 100 yards or 100 feet of pavement, how much it costs. It's astronomical. I think we've got like 1,400?
1,207.
1,207 miles. So, anyway, I really appreciate all of the work that you're doing and I would like to ask you, if you could respond to that question about a hiring freeze, mental health? It's okay. It's a question we're talking about.
It's actually not just a hiring freeze in mental health. We're actually looking at all positions in DHHS administration and others. We have more expenditures than we have revenue in our mental health branch and administration costs. We're hiring a consultant, Wendy Brown, who's worked for the county in the past. We're having a couple people come in and help us. We've been, I know we've been reporting the deficit in mental health budget for years to your board. And I feel that it's my responsibility to fix that however we can in order to provide services to the community. Maybe we shouldn't do the same things the way we've always done them, maybe we need to do them a little differently. That's all I'd say about that. But I just want to make sure that we are really clear that it's not the boots-on-the-ground positions that are being looked at, it's other positions, anywhere that we can save dollars so that we can provide services, that's what we're looking at.
Thank you, Director Beck, Supervisor Bass, and then Supervisor Bow.
Thank you, Madam Chair. And also, it's like we can't be all things to all people, is kind of the way when we talk, that sometimes we do things that are not necessarily within, you know, mandated to us to do because they're good things to do, but not necessarily requirements that we do them. Is that kind of some of it, too? Just looking at what's working, what's not working? I mean, when you're going through this, it's just taking a real deep look at?
There's certain services that we have to provide, and maybe we can provide them differently and more efficiently so that it's not as costly as it is. That's what we're looking at.
Supervisor Bow?
And I think, having served up here under two directors, I think what you had said when you came on board was you were going to evaluate all of the position, all of the programs that we have that hadn't been evaluated to see what's working, what's not working, evaluate, make sure the efficiencies are there, and make sure that the mandates we are, are working the best. And sometimes we have a little overlap. So I think it's more of an evaluation than a freeze that can be dropped or circumvented by the department and Brown when it happens. So I appreciate you following on your mission of three years ago, saying we are going to evaluate all our programs to see what bang for the buck we're getting and see what's working. No layoffs are involved here, it's just adjusting the chairs on the deck to make sure that we're getting the optimum out of it.
Thank you very much, Director Beck. So, we have, Supervisor Madron?
Thank you, Madam Chair. So, in regards to waterfront in particular and Drug Medical, are we thinking that there is a need here in the short term to try and help provide some assistance there? Is that a specific? I mean, I know there's other centers, you know, Humboldt Recovery and others, but I'm just curious because I know they were already on the ropes nine months ago, let alone now.
Yeah, and I wouldn't be the best to answer that. I think mine is just to be aware that this may come back to us, that there may be dollars needed for whatever the recovery services are. I know Aegis is about to open, but they're different, they actually have, they've got a different situation. So that's, you know, my wouldn't, mine wouldn't be a specific action to any specific provider right now. It's just basically saying, let's keep in mind that we may need to do some quick movement if the dollars don't finally come through because we work too hard to get the addiction services here to just have them go away.
Absolutely agree. So, on that one, we'll hold on that, but definitely appreciate you highlighting the concerns there. On the remaining funds in Measure Z, I'm seeing two numbers. There was the $205,000 number, but in the Measure Z report, it's got a 395, 395, 631 number. Which is the correct number that's the remaining balance?
Your board has $205,528 available for allocation.
So we must have already allocated some of that other 395 then, at some point along the line? Because I'm looking at the Measure Z report, says remaining balance to allocate 395.
That was contained in today's board report?
Yes, the Measure Z report, the specifics of Measure Z, whereas there is the other number in the staff report. So, discrepancy there. Yeah.
Supervisor Madron, what page are you on in the staff report?
This was the Measure Z attachment that has the 395.
Which is from 2019.
I understand, I'm just trying to get clarification.
I see where you're referencing the bottom of the committee's letter of recommendations. This, this letter was drafted in April of last fiscal year. So this was how the fiscal year began. And if you recall, your board had to cut $395,000 from their recommendations, which was a fun process.
That's a negative, yes, of course. Parentheses, thank you. Very good, I appreciate that clarification. So, we got the $205,000. I mean, while I'd love to see the Orleans Volunteer Fire Department get some more support, I recognize that opening that door, it would only be fair if we looked at all the others who had some amount cut from their requests earlier. So I'll pull that door back shut at this time, although I do know they have an important need as well as many others. So really, the two issues before us today, other than receiving the report, and thank you for the updates, would be how to spend the $205,000. And it seems like we've gotten a strong recommendation for roads, I think we probably have that support up here. Then the only other one is how to proceed with the budget process. Is it going to be 5% as recommended, or 4% or 3%? I certainly would feel more comfortable with 3%. It's still an increase over last year, but it's a little more conservative than 5%. And that might very well free up some additional monies for things that become incredibly important, like waterfront or roads or other things. So, I would certainly throw that out to be entertained by my colleagues.
Supervisor Wilson, actually, let me, is there anyone who wants to speak specifically to what?
Three to five.
Supervisor Madron said?
Well, I think we've already beaten the leftover funds because roads got cut out. I thought we agreed that left, any excess funds would go to roads. I mean, we said it last time, and I think that carries forward to leftover funds. I thought that was going to be the, because they didn't get any of the original funding and now I notice they're kind of not listed as one of the recipients at all. So I think, I took it on verbatim that that was actually going to go to roads without question because that's what we said. The other thing, and I do, I do want to make a, you know, I'd love to have a year's balance in our reserves, but I do want to say, I'd love to have the, you know, but when I, when I came on this board, our reserves were $250,000, and I think we're up over $5 million now. And that's because of what are, what we've done with belt tightening and trying to work through. So, is that a year's supply? No, but it's a heck of a lot more than when I came on the board at $250,000. And we're still able to provide services and do what we're doing. So I wanted to, I do want to know that reserves are going up for that rainy day or when it does hit the fan or whatever may happen. So I applaud you guys for that one, too.
Supervisor Bass?
Thank you, Madam Chair. And in regards to the reserves, I suspect there's a reason they picked five versus three because they're very, you know, a lot of thought put into this. So I was going to ask our CIO or deputy, somebody, if they could explain the reasoning. Somebody.
Sure. So, as reported in the mid-year budget report, we look at expenditure increases and revenue increases. And general fund departments, their expenses are going up by 6%. So we're only giving them a 5% increase. So we're already asking them to absorb some additional cost increases. Reducing the 5% increase to 3% could result in some service reduction. So I would just caution your board to take that into consideration.
Supervisor Wilson?
I'm going to make a motion that we move forward with staff recommendations, one, two, three, four, five, six, and seven. That being said, is there a second?
Second.
I do, if we could, there was, you know, a substantive question asked by Supervisor Madron related to the, you know, the reduction potential from 5 to 3% in terms of the overall. So could you just address that question and what that might?
Just did.
Okay, you just did, okay, sorry. Never mind. Or were you?
He was busy thinking about the motion.
Very complex motion that I had to throw out there, so. Reading through all of those numbers was very complicated. Thanks.
So, we have a motion in a second? Yeah, we did. Oh, that was on?
Recommendation of, I think it's in here, hold on. Three, thank you.
So it is, it's all?
Yep. It is definitely there.
All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None? Passes unanimously. And again, thank you very much. I do want to, wait, is it not included in the motion?
I would just like to ask for a point of clarification on the allocation of Measure Z funds because number three says, and provide direction on whether to allocate funding. So we need to know whether you want to allocate the funding to roads or whether you'd like to carry that forward into fiscal year 2021.
I think the intention is to specifically allocate it to roads as recommended by the Citizens Advisory Committee.
Thank you.
So, do we need to take the vote again? I'll be happy to call the question. All those in favor? Okay, point of clarification. All right, so it has been passed unanimously. Again, I do want to reiterate my deep thanks for all of the work. And can you just very quickly, either Alicia or CIO Nielsen, let the public know about the kickoff now of the budget process? Because this is actually just a mid-year review.
Yeah, I can touch on that. Last week, the departments had their official budget kickoff, so they are in full-fledged budget mode. Budgets are due back to the county administrative office on March 16th. Our staff will return to your board in mid-April to present the Citizens Advisory Committee recommendations. They'll be meeting every Thursday for the month of March at 2:00 PM here in board chambers and will deliver their list of recommendations to us the first part of April. And then from there, we have departmental budget presentations come to your board on May 4th and May 18th. And then the public hearings, which sort of acts as your board's final opportunity for tweaking the budget. for tweaking the budget prior to budget adoption is June 15th. We'll propose the budget to you on June 2nd with budget adoption taking place on June 23rd. All of those meetings are a great opportunity for the public to participate in the budget process.
Great. Thank you, Alicia. Supervisor Wilson?
Yeah, I just wanted to comment that the budget process is, is not just about money, it's about policy. And so our budgets are a reflection of policy. So I want the public to, you know, to understand that, you know, engaging in that budget process isn't just about allocations of money, it's a reflection, it's actually a moral document about, about where priorities are. And I think people should approach it from that perspective to a certain degree. And so I just want to understand, the, the public to understand that this is a great place to engage at that level.
Thank you. And supervisor Brown?
Well, I think there's a very comprehensive calendar on the back of all our budget, and I think that is on the website or is going to be put on the website. I think there's over 22 meetings that are being scheduled and handled with different department heads, public budget reviews to address the budget policies and everything else. So I think we're trying to get it out there as much as everybody, but if this isn't on the, on the webpage, it would be great if it was on there so people could follow it. So, and I see nodding heads, so thanks because I'm so technically charged up.
Supervisor Madron?
Thank you, Madam Chair. So have the department heads, in particular Sheriff Provation and the DA approached you yet to talk about a process for capping?
So we have a meeting set up next week with the department heads that your board directed to work on the Measure Z request from the Citizens Advisory Committee. And then your board also directed us to return in April to present that information to you. So we were, we are in progress and targeted to meet the date that your board set.
Thank you very much.
That will go to our next item, which is a public hearing and bring the Planning and Building Department up. Thank you, Alicia. Welcome, Director Ford and staff. We have an appeal of a planning commission approval of a, the Brown Quarry modification application. And so I am going to open the public hearing, receive staff report and testimony from the appellant, the project applicant and the public.
Thank you, Chair panel. John Ford. Joining me is Steve Warner and Joshua Doris with the Planning and Building Department. I just want to give you a brief overview. As you mentioned, this is an appeal and normally appeals are very contentious. But in this particular case today, a very willing applicant met with a willing appellant and agreed upon an approach to arriving at a solution. That solution involved preparation of a third-party geologic engineering report, which resulted in the need for changes to the project. Those changes have been made and are being presented to you today for your consideration. So what we bring you today is, is really a project that has slightly, been slightly modified since the planning commission hearing, but it does resolve the concerns with the appeal. And so with that, I'm going to ask Mr. Doris to present.
Through the chair, I have a.
Supervisor Wilson?
I have a plane to catch. So there's really not a lot of conflict here. I'm going to go do that.
Well, no, I can, and I'm, unless everybody wants, it sounds like resolution has been hit. I've talked to the applicant. I know the area very well, Mother Nature's, and, and absolutely know when they opened it up in the 90s. Talked to a former engineer, David Lindberg, who has worked on the site on numerous occasions. It sounds like the applicant has met all the demands of the plaintiff. And so I, I'm not sure, and I'd, I'd love to refer to the supervisor whose district it lies in, but I think this is one of those, as you said, rare occasions where everybody has met a happy medium. And so we can go through this process so everybody hears about it, or I would move for approval of staff's recommendation as it sits right now.
Second. Okay, so it is a publicly noticed public hearing, so we do have to go through the process. You can shorten it.
We, we don't have to give a presentation. Through the chair.
Yeah.
We don't have to give a presentation, be happy to listen to any public input and, and answer any questions that you might have.
Great. And I will note that the original item before the planning commission was in 2017, so this is two and a half years in the making, a lot of work that went into it. So that's also something to note. I'll, without further discussion, I'll open it up for a public comment.
Ken Swawski, I've, I've spoken with multiple members of the Brown family on this particular project, and it has come to resolution because of their willingness to work with the situation, but it's not as if it was cost-free to them. My understanding is that this was done by a group that wanted to have input and oversee the project. They had competent, the Brown family had a competent assessment on this. The person who came in and had objections and testified and got involved in this didn't even do a site visit. In other words, their engineer sat in his office, made determinations, and they were willing, rather than go through total shakedown litigation, probably only spend $100,000 dealing with something they should not have had to deal with at all. It's not in the public interest for these groups to go ahead and have input and oversight. It was a wonderful thing. They were willing to settle and working with your planning and building and were settled out here in not a contentious move. That's wonderful, but it should not have happened. So now, of course, they have additional costs. It's not in the public interest for them to have to pass those costs on to all of us who need this resource. So I, I do caution the plaintiff on these kind of things. There's a perception out here that it's not necessarily in the, my understanding, there's never been a claim against this site. Nothing from the water board, nothing from any of the other entities that oversee this, and yet they and all the rest of us in California who are trying to provide services at reasonable prices have to go through what didn't end up being shakedown litigation, but as far as I could tell was headed that way. So my congratulations to your department and for the Browns for willing to work on this thing. And we owe a great deal of debt to those contractors out there who have to put up with this on an ongoing basis against, again, we've seen all kinds of other situations where other things of this nature end up in litigation and it's just to go ahead and line the pockets about out-of-area lawyers, and that does not in the public interest. Thank you. My opportunity to speak.
Thank you. Any further public comment on this item? Seeing none, I'll bring it back to the board. Any further discussion? Supervisor Madron?
Yeah, I want to provide an ex parte communication as this is de novo, I believe. And I did tour the site with Roger Brown and his son. I've been to the site many times before. I've bought rock out of that site for watershed restoration work. I appreciate the concerns of the appellants. I believe they're here today and I recognize that this did cost the Brown family additional funds. I really am grateful to the Brown family for the work they did to, to meet those concerns. And I'm glad that the appellant and the applicant have come to an agreement and I'm supportive of the project at this point, given that, that outcome. So thank you, everybody, for working that out. It's, doesn't get much better than that. So, thank you.
So with that.
And I guess I will. I didn't know I had to report, but I have talked to multiple Browns like I have for almost 40 years. So anyway, got a full inkling on what's going on here and that's what prompted me to make the motion.
Having said that, all those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None? Passed unanimously. We do have Supervisor Wilson is absent at this point. Thank you very much. That was very quick. It's okay, you spent a lot of time on it up until now. And that will bring us to the end of our meeting. We are adjourned. Thank you.